Oh, this is. Exactly.
I got into it, like scrolling through it. I make things like I like to know where you're at. I wish it was late. Yeah, I'm like, I would like to show you on the show. I mean, I'll get highlighted. So. I can do it. A little patient. I'll drive by. Just take a peek. Where are we? There's a couple of things. I've updated it up there. I've got it here, so.
This one might be.
Is that updated from what Patrick said?
I believe maybe.
Uh, prior to, I think, the correction.
You know, how did you have the other out here? The spreadsheet?
The spreadsheet?
Uh, we did not print out copies. Projects in review.
You ready? Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the New Kent County Planning Commission. If you would, please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please turn towards the flag and repeat as we say. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And if you would, please call roll. Ms. Rose?
Here.
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Dombroski?
Here.
Reverend Hathaway?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. La Rochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt? Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
We have a call. Thank you very much. We'll move to item number four on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any commissioners' deletion comments, changes, erasures, notes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Townsend.
Um, can I get clarification on the clarification that was in here at the bottom of the approval of minutes from Ms. Rose?
Sure.
It was in regards to the AFD?
Yes, I did abstain from that vote. I thought the applicant was premature in their application.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it would be good for the adjournment to actually have a time that it was adjourned.
There was no time noted, and I wasn't present for the meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I don't recall either. What time were you adjourned?
I think it was about seven forty-five.
Close to my seven forty-five.
Well, that's. Yeah, that's probably was was close.
Yeah.
Any other comments, changes, corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Please.
If there's no other corrections or changes, um, other than the one statement that we may want to add the additional time, but I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. The recommendation is to approve the minutes with the one change, we're adding the completion of our meeting time. Roll call, please. Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Abstain.
Mr. Dombroski?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Cortezah Thomas? Ms. Thomas, sorry. Mr. La Rochelle?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt? Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Oh, excuse me. I need to change that. I abstained because I was not here for for that meeting, even though I saw it on rebroadcast. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment period, and I would say. Mr. Civil, would you check to see if anybody signed it, just to make us happy? I doubt if there is.
Based upon the parking lot.
Yeah, but the parking lot's a little empty.
Now, being none, I will close the citizen comment period and move on to the next item on our agenda, presentations. Mr. Aggie, is there any presentations from staff? Okay. Any presentations from the commissioners? If not, I'll move on. Unfinished unfinished business? I don't think there is any unfinished business at this time, unless any commissioners have. There are no public meetings. We're moving right along. I might beat my own record here. New business. Mr. Aggie? Okay. Anybody? And now we'll go right down to commissioners' report, and we'll go by each commissioner's. Oh, chairman's report, excuse me, chairman's report. I'll save mine for the last part. Let's go on to Plan RVA, Mr., I mean, Reverend Hathaway, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, Plan RVA has a monthly newsletter, and if you're interested in it, you can sign up. The link is planrva.org/newsletter. And it's interesting, you you get a real recap of everything that we're doing. The November thirteenth board meeting, uh, the Virginia Association of Planning District Commissioner selected Patricia Page, and I'm sure Mr. Moyer will say something about that, uh, to receive the twenty twenty-four Gordon and Dixon Award. They came here to do that. Planning Commission, every meeting I go to, if you mention Ms. Page's name, uh, they love her, and rightly so. Uh, so we're excited about that. November fourteenth, the Plan RVA held a joint executive commission meeting, and, uh, we basically approved the annual audit and ensured that they were in good standing. Financially, uh, Plan RVA is really in good standing. The big issue that was discussed was what would be the appropriate amount of carryover uh, for the next year. And. The October twenty-second, when we had our comprehensive plan, twenty forty-five public engagement, Plan RVA came and did a very good workshop. I thought that was one of the best that I've been to. The citizens really participated in that, and I was very happy to see Plan RVA involved in that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Reverend Hathaway. Next item on the agenda is commissioners' report, and I'll go roundtable for this, and we'll start with Ms. Johnson. Do you have anything you would like to report on?
I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you very kindly. Mr. La Rochelle?
No, sir, nothing to report.
Mr. Dombroski?
Nothing to report at this time. I know that John may be able to speak a little bit more on this, and I missed the last, um, housing committee meeting, and I want to just hear a little bit more about that because he was there and I was not able to.
Okay. We'll come to you, Mr. Moyer, in a minute. Ms. Townsend?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody looks at my Facebook page, but I had a photo that I put on the Facebook page of an accident that happened on two forty-nine, right into Quentin exit. It's between Dispatch Road and sort of like Citizen Farmers Bank, but I think we're at a point right now that we are getting critical with the traffic issues there, one with the traffic going too fast. I know that we are waiting financially for some funds to come in to put a roundabout in, but I don't know that we could wait. I would like to suggest that either we start putting some rumble strips up or possibly go in and do what they did at Rosie's in front of Brick, going into Brickshire with a temporary roundabout thing. But I think at this time, we really need to take a stern look at that and reduce that traffic there and and pace it out, because the thing is, it's like when the light's green, then all the traffic's coming, but when it's red, all the traffic's trying to come out of the grocery store and out of the banks, and it doesn't stop. So if you were ever to try to make a left-hand turn off of Dispatch on two forty-nine, good luck. You'll sit there for a long time, and you just have to sort of gun it to get out of there, um, because of the traffic. It just, it's no rhyme or reason. With the stoplight, it does not give give a break with the traffic for other lane people to actually enter on it. So I would like to just voice my opinion, and possibly Mr. Moyer can talk with the board and, uh, come up with something that, something that would just maybe bring some attention to the public driving. It just seems like by the time they get off Interstate, they get up to the bank, and they're coming up that little grade, they like to pick up the speed. And that's where the whole issue is, is the speed is just too great to try to cross the traffic.
If if you would mind, what's the speed limit through that area right now? It's still forty-five? Okay. Okay.
This is, we we kind of bring this up because this is in our district as well, but, I mean, in that little run as we come up two forty-nine has become an issue in the past year, year and a half, that has become more and more of an issue as you, I mean, there's hardware store, daycares, multiple daycares, and also childcare centers. That that is an issue that we need to address, and I I do, I tend to agree with you, and when that is a interchange that we need to have some focus on, especially as planning commission, as what can we do to mitigate the changes of traffic on two forty-nine, which we know is coming because of because of the highway expansion? That's in and of itself, that's a totally different story, but what can we do to fix that problem?
Thank you. Mr. Aggie, do you think it would be appropriate that we, as commissioners, ask Ms., um, our traffic? Amy, uh, yeah, Amy? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's do that. All right, thank you. Reverend Hathaway? Thank you, sir. I'll save you next to last. Ms. Rose?
Uh, nothing else to report. I I think I passed that accident right after it happened, uh, and I was I was thinking exactly the same thing, so.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer? Please.
Good news is the, uh, Marketplace Route sixty light is ready to go. What we need, Mr. La Rochelle, is Dominion to turn on the electricity. Uh, I have, I have, I know, I know. I'm, hey, I'm joking, okay? But, um, actually, I've talked to a Crystal Bryce, um, and a Tori Lindsay, uh, with Dominion, and they they have been told by VDOT that the construction is done, so they know now to turn it on. So when that happens, it will be flashing for several days, and then it'll be on. I I don't know if that light will help. Okay, the whole movement of traffic up and around through to to C N F, but, um, if you notice, there are some placards that are, um, they're they're covered of what they are, um, right on the bridge on two forty-nine, and basically what they're saying underneath that is new traffic light.
And John, I'd like to give you a side that looks like to me, from what I've heard, is that tonight they will start the transition to set that light up. That's going to go on the westbound sixty-four lane.
Yeah, we'll go westbound. Instead of turning right to go on to westbound, uh, you'll be turning left. They say it's a temporary, but, um, I I don't see, I I've talked to the, uh, one of the people built helping to build that, and I don't see how they can get four lanes underneath that bridge. Right now, there's three, uh, but they would have to put another lane in because it would be three lanes and the entrance ramp. So I I would, I expect that that could be a a permanent light, which isn't the worst thing in the world. But yes, the, you know, it's coming up pretty soon that it's going to be starting to, so that'll be, that'll be a light that will slow down some traffic, okay? Especially coming up towards Dispatch. Now, it it's a step, you know? Like you said, there'll be a break, you know, and that's what you're looking for to get out on there. Okay, um, right now, the, you know, it has gone from, uh, the ability to do a roundabout, getting the permission, uh, from VDOT, to now it is at Timmons, uh, for design work. When it comes out of that, it'll be discussion on financing. We're going to look at this financing on this, um, a little bit different. One, we have, uh, Central Virginia Transportation Authority money that could be used for it. We are, uh, thinking of revenue sharing with with, uh, VDOT, and if we have to, maybe some of our own, uh, capital improvement project money. All that has to be channeled through VDOT, who then will, uh, put the contract out and forbid, and then hopefully the construction will occur. Now, uh, one thing I'm doing, uh, in my district that I I don't know if it's unique or not, but every third Tuesday at nine o'clock, I have a sidewalk committee meeting at Journey Church in their coffee shop. I believe, uh, you were, you were, yeah, uh, Josh was there last time, and, uh, a bunch of, uh, anybody can come, anybody, any district in that, if you have some issues. Um, I, the reason why I call it sidewalk, we got Pete Sweet there that loves sidewalks, and we got a few other people that, um, would like to see sidewalks from Third Base to McDonald's or all the way up Longview, and also, um, from McDonald's to Dispatch. It's interesting, and I'll be happy to listen, and and we know a little bit about the cost and what will be involved, and we like to spell that out. But if there's any kind of transportation, uh, issues in District Two, um, I invite anybody to come out at nine o'clock, and this happens to be tomorrow morning, uh, at nine. Grand Illumination is, I think, December first. I think that's, uh, out front here, and the Housing Committee meeting. We had, this past meeting, we had Chris McNamara from Virginia Housing. He must have gone through six or seven different grants that are available to contractors, to the county, to that that we could be, uh, involved in, anywhere from, uh, grants for, um, project design, uh, to, uh, imagine, what was it? Was it, um, innovation grants for things that might be a little different, that might be out of the ordinary, um, to, uh, building grants? So these are opportunities for our citizens, our for the county, to look at and be able to do something with. And that was Chris McNamara from Virginia Housing, who's a very good, very good, uh, talk. They, uh, his stress is, um, economic development, uh, is also housing. Housing is hand in hand with economic development. We can see that with, uh, right now with Autozone. We we could have used a few more houses for Autozone. So, sir, that's all I got.
Thank you. If I may question you, what, in the Housing Committee, between Mr. Dombroski and Mr. Moyer, what's the, has there been any focus on to the where, when, cost, things like that, that the county should be looking at or trying to promote or trying to incentivize to?
So, um, there are three committees. One is new new construction. The other is, um, older construction and safety of existing, uh, properties, and then we have a research committee. And basically, the last several meetings was getting together as what are we as a housing committee? And then, uh, the next several meetings will be, uh, what what are we going to present in the way of information to either planning commission or to the board supervisors, in what things are be should be suggested to do? You know, they they are not, they're a committee, not an authority, so there's there's no access to spending of money, but they are, the reason why we we want this is they can give the planning commission and also board supervisors advice on what what should be done. Right now, um, you know, we have about a thousand new homes that are ready to break ground on in, um, developments that were approved, uh, before the new cluster subdivision plan, as you guys remember, we we passed that. Outside of that, there has been zero approved new lots, at least in the last ten months. There are plenty of lots out there. There's three thousand lots out there. It's just not, nothing's been approved this year, um, because nobody's brought them to us except for one subdivision. So, um, the the major problem, as we've seen throughout the country, throughout state, throughout the counties, has been, uh, the ability to have attainable workforce housing. And in our, in in our little, uh, island here of New Kent, uh, we have a couple of things that are drawbacks to those type of housings. One, um, our average home price is somewhere around four hundred seventy-nine thousand. Our average income, uh, average household income's a hundred and one thousand. So we are, uh, you know, well above what is thought of as, um, uh, the ability to, uh, purchase a home, the average income. So the need for lower-priced housing i- is not as great, even though it is because we're not able to keep our our kids and some of our, um, first responders and that in the county to live, because we don't have the that type of housing for them.
Is there a timeline expected as to when some?
Board has, the board did not put anything like that on.
Okay.
But, um, I know they want to get stuff up to the boards, commissioning boards.
Yeah.
To talk about it. I I think what's important is for this to go along hand in hand with the comprehensive plan.
Sure.
And then zoning, and that's where they're going to be a great help with the zoning. You know, where where do you want to have different things? If you read through the comprehensive plan, there are, there are words that have been mentioned in there. I'll go, I'll get trouble this. Words that have been mentioned in that comprehensive plan that's never been in a comprehensive plan in, uh, comprehensive plan in New Kent history, uh, multi-family, higher density. You know, we're not promoting that. I'm just saying that that's what people talked about when they were interviewed for the comprehensive plan. So those are the things we have to think about. If our citizens are are talking about that, uh, we have to think about it, for sure.
Two more items in even it, those discussions or investigations in multi-family apartments, things of that nature, that's part of this discussion in the housing?
Oh, oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And the the final thing is, I think this commission, uh, would love to hear some summary or some update on that from somebody in the advisory committee.
Hijack. I I am, I am the, I'm the the guy from the board.
And I appreciate that.
That is on the the Housing Committee, but I I'm, I'm the person that it, one of the people that's going to be presented to.
Yeah.
So there's, I don't want to be that person.
Understand.
You know what I mean? And that, and that is exactly why I think that when we look at this, is we look at the comprehensive plan, and I I think there's maybe a stall a little bit, and we've kind of pushed things back because we're waiting for that approval of comprehensive plan, and we look at those locations, and that's our job as a commission to say, this is where we want these facilities to be. We look at multi-family, we look at multi-dwellings, and where we can increase the in the amount of people in one location, and where do we put them? And that's our job, is to say, where do we want them to be? And it's not to say it's a gunshot blast like we've had in the past fifteen, twenty years, is we're not just throwing it all over to everyone's district. It's where do we want to put it? And the comprehensive plan has a big part of that. When that that plan is approved by the board, that's where we need to look, and that's where we're going to put the items that we need. And at that point, it's up to developers to do that. It's not up to us to to build those items.
No, I understand.
It's where we're going to put them, and we're going to say where they need to be, and that is the most critical point, is where do we put them in the county where the infrastructure, we don't end up with the road like Dispatch? Let's put them in the right spot, and that's what the plan has been made for, and we are on our way to that point. It's just a matter of finding that location, and when the board approves it, then we can say, as this commission, this is where we put it, because it's not going to be in Barronsville. We know that.
Right, yes.
It's going to be, it's going to be to the, it's going to be to the west, and we need to make sure that we put it in the right spot.
And I'll add to that, Jake. One of the things that I think we should probably do sometime in a planning commission meeting is look at what the farms of New Kent is going to eventually have in it. Some of our comprehensive plan and our zoning is going to be based on some of the things that that's, that, that area is going to have already. Do we need to duplicate that? Maybe not. So we need to have a good idea about that.
It's the good reference.
That could be a, you know, Josh, if you would sometime present that, you know, approximately what you know, because that, that's going to be a drastic change. And that's, and, and why I don't have a problem saying we haven't approved any lots because of what's going to be there. There's a lot to be there. And that, that was planned 2005.
2005, 2006?
Yeah.
I mean, it was seen, so.
So, you know, because 2008 didn't come out of the ground until, you know, eventually. But now, now it's coming out of the ground.
Yeah.
You know?
Mr. Dombrowski, if you wouldn't mind relay into that workshop, that there would, I think this commission would be strongly interested in information.
Yes.
Shortly, shortly before or shortly after the comprehensive plan has been set, so that we can be thinking ahead with those recommendations.
No, I, I agree. I mean, I think that the biggest part that we have is what we can do for all of our constituents and everyone that is in our districts is to take care of where we're headed, because that's what they want to know.
Sure.
Is where is the county headed? And I know that, Josh, I don't, can't see you over there, but I know that once the, once the plan is approved, we will open the code, and the code will change. And the code needs to change because that's what the problem is. That's what everyone, that's what everyone cares about, is this issue, that issue. And we need to, we need to beat that before it becomes a problem to the people of the county and put it in the right location.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Housing is such a challenging issue that I think we probably need to have a work session to talk about it. The ideas of saying, well, we're going to put it all in one, one area, I'm not so sure that's the best. And, and there's, there are some positive ways you can bring the cost down. But that means a real partnership with the county to lower the construction costs. That's the, that's one of the big issues in getting housing affordability. One contractor said he's got a hundred, over, in excess of $100,000 already tied up before he can go to market. And, and that's in the approval process and all of that. So there are a lot of things that, that the county can do, and I think it would help us to have a work session to talk about that and talk about where we want it, because I think that's going to be a big issue.
Reverend Hathaway, do you think that should occur before they conclude their work? Or?
I don't think it, I don't think it can happen before they finish because that's really an important part of it.
Okay.
But before we get too far in the zoning ordinances.
Certainly.
Yes. I, I agree with you 100% Reverend Hathaway, as I, I think we need to sit down and, and have a brainstorming session where we decide where, where we need to put things, what needs to happen. And the Planning Commission has a right to, that's what we need to say, and this is our job. This is why we sit here, is to make sure that those are in the right location, because it's only going to grow. I mean, we're, we're small now, but it's only going to get bigger.
Before we go to Mr. Davis here for a second, yes, Ms. Rose, go ahead.
I just had, I guess, a question and, and I guess a comment. I, I know you, you mentioned that there's, there's three subcommittees, and one, one of them is research. Yeah, I, I know there, there is a stall because of, of the comp, comp plan approval. But is there any, any good way to funnel the, the research that, that you're compiling to us sooner rather than later in preparation for, for, for some of these discussions?
Have, have the information before we get to that point, basically.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I think there's, there is definitely a way to funnel that. I mean, the Planning Commission needs to know that information as we funnel it and as we can get to that point. And I'm happy to, to reach out to the, to the proper people to bring that forward so we can have the information here on the table in the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As a follow-up, though, is there anything to a point where it can be forwarded to the plant, Comp Plan Update Committee now, or has there been any?
At this point, I don't have any information that I could forward to you, but in the next couple, couple of days, we could probably grab that. Because I feel like a lot of times with the, it's very scatterbrained often when it comes to that, those committees. It can be, we talk about it for a day, and then we don't hear anything else about it. Reverend Hathaway can probably attest to that, is you hear a little bit, and then nothing comes of it for a week or two. And then maybe it could be a month. And so we need to drive what we want and what the county wants to them to say, okay, where do we want to go? And I agree with, I love the idea of a work session. I think that's the perfect way for us to say, this is what we think. And then from there, they can build their plan behind that, Joe.
Yeah, because I think we're, well, we appear to be winding down with the update, you know, at least it's my desire that we are winding down. We've been, been at it for a couple of years now. But, but at the same time, I guess it is, it may be hard to estimate, at what point in time will you have something that's, if you want to pass on to have it included in this comp plan update? Because that's got to be part of it if you want to, you know, affect the change, just put it in the comp plan.
And I think, too, the, the comp plan in the sense of where locations are is, is perfect. I mean, in the sense of what the county's plan is, you guys have hit the nail on the head. I mean, you've done a great job. But I think to that point, it comes to where are we going to put this multifamily, if that's what people are looking for, multi-dwellings, where are we going to put it? And it falls within, it still falls within the plan. It's just a matter of where is that location actually going to be? But it falls within that zone if you look at the overall comp plan, where we'll actually be. It's just a matter of where do we want it? And where, where is the best suited thing for transportation and ideas? And where are we going to be?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't miss an opportunity to include it if we can, so that's all.
To continue the discussion for just a second, Mr. Aragi, let me get your impressions a little bit. We've got several new commissioners here. We've got individuals here that's never gone through the comp plan, working into the new rewrite of the zoning ordinance. We've got the Housing Subcommittee that's being focused in on a, a component of that. Do you think it is wise for us to be looking at maybe a consultant to help this playing field reach a fantastic goal?
I'm glad. So part of our CIP request for fiscal year '26, which will start July 1st, '25, is a $400,000 request for consultant and professional services to assist with the development ordinance rewrite. So the intent is to look at zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances. Going back to Mr. McNamara's presentation to Housing Advisory Committee, one of the grant programs that they have at Virginia Housing is no match, non-competitive rolling basis, which is all great things because it means no cost for the county. But we're going to look at pursuing one of those grant programs to have a third-party consultant take a deep dive into our existing ordinances, come up with where the roadblocks exist, you know, for housing. And I think that's a good chunk of information to have as we get into development ordinance rewrite. We'll probably have a steering committee made up of, you know, certain community members, stakeholder groups. There's obviously going to be, you know, some public engagement with that. You know, the comp plan is the guiding principle, you know, that the board obviously uses to, you know, when considering rezonings or conditional use applications. But the zoning and subdivision ordinances are really what defines what you can and can't do, and what are the requirements? What does that look like, you know, from a parking perspective, landscaping, lighting, you know, architectural standards, things like that? Our code hasn't been updated in probably the better part of two decades, almost. So it will be what I would consider a repeal, rewrite, restate, rather than just an amendment. The market has changed as far as development is concerned. The look of development has changed. So there are certain things that we want to try and capture, you know, as far as ordinance, development ordinances can complement the comp plan, which obviously is a kind of 20-year outlook.
Would you think it'd be advisable to bring the consultant in fairly early, maybe just towards the tail end of the comp plan? And with the understanding that there's still information that'd be coming from the housing workshop or subcommittee? So that they're not coming in with just a pile of information that's staring them in the face, and how do I work all this crap out?
Yeah, some of it's budgetary constraints.
Sure.
You know, because that wasn't budgeted for this fiscal year. So part of it will rely on the money. But I think we will start the process once we have a good understanding of, you know, what the budget looks like. It'll probably go out as a RFP, so we'll ask for proposals, you know, weigh those proposals and then do contract negotiation with a consultant. You know, we obviously have been on the tail end of the comp plan, myself and the new planning staff. You guys have been involved with it for a lot longer than we have. You know, so I think the information's there. We're still kind of internally talking about, you know, how we're going to present that information, how do we want to set up the contract, you know, what does staff want to be responsible for versus, you know, what we want to put on the consultant. So it'll be a tag-team effort, but we'll make sure that the consultant has the information that they need and, you know, produce a good product.
Ms. Rose?
Mr. Chairman, just one, one question. Are you envisioning that this, that the contract is going to be multiple phases? Meaning, you'll have, the first work product would be simply an evaluation of our existing ordinance and recommendations for removing the roadblocks? And then the next phase would actually be assistance working on actually rewriting the ordinance?
Potentially. We've looked at some other locality contracts and RFPs. Chester Field is one, because they're going through a zoning modernization project right now. So they broke it up into phases similar to that. We haven't nailed down the specifics yet, but we're open to phases. I don't think that it'll be something that we do one phase, implement that one phase. I think we'll probably just work in pieces to kind of make sure that progress is made, but then roll it all out as, as one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Joe now.
All right. An update regarding the comp plan update, that we had the open house or public engagement at the middle school on October 22nd. I feel it was well-attended. The number I see is 150, as far as estimates, as far as the attendance, which was good. I was interested in, with EPR, if there's any significant departures from, you know, the citizens and what they're thinking and what they're, as far as what they think of the project so far. Most were very supportive of the general direction of the plan, including the need for a greater housing variety. So that's kind of answers that question there, too. So they also got some detailed input on some elements, including sidewalk connections. There was, received comments from, and the note here says Chickahominy Tribe. I believe more appropriately was the Eastern Chickahominy Tribe, as far as the desire to be consulted and included as far as, you know, soliciting information just from, from that group or from the, those folks, to which we are certainly meeting with them. And they continue to make minor edits to pull together a revised draft plan. They are working on some text and mapping. And they have to submit, or will be submitting a draft soon to DEQ and, and VDOT, which is required by state law. And, and a question I had of them, what, what, we anticipate the timeline moving forward, what that's going to look like? So it's possibly, and again, possibly, don't hold me to this, it may be January when there could be a draft or proposal that comes to this commission. And then, of course, it would be a month or two down the line before, you know, again, pending any changes or any heartaches we may have with the document to where it would go before the board. So my best guess is going to be certainly, when it hits the board, is going to be probably mid, late spring at the earliest. So, but we did have a very good turnout with the committee, committee members at the, as well as staff at the, at the open house. So that was good to see. So, and again, it was. And have nothing else pending that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Rose.
One quick question. The, you, you mentioned the submittal to VDOT and the DEQ. Have they, have they said statutorily what, at what point they, they have, they have to do that? Is it so many days before, before final approval or?
I, I'm not, I don't know what, if there's a timeline of the medical.
I'm curious.
Timeline requirement? It's more that there are subject matter requirements that are, that have to be included in the comp plan. So it's really once we feel that we've captured that, we send it to VDOT and DEQ for their review to make sure that they're in agreement. So that way, we're in compliance with the required programs.
They'll highlight the words so they can pick them out easy. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Moyer.
The one thing I just wanted to mention to the steering committee for the comprehensive plan, that I, I've read a number of different county comprehensive plans, rewrites and that. This is not a cut-and-paste thing that is being done. And I'm very happy about that because it could be very easily done that. And this is very thoughtful, this consultant did a great job, and you guys on the steering committee have it very thorough on this. And so I think the, the whole community should be appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. I will turn to myself right now for a little reports. First off, I was going to address Mr. Aragi. Do you think we could ask Ms. Enman about maybe, is it time now to do like a corridor study for improvements from Route 60 on, for 248 from Route 60 all the way to just beyond Dispatch Road or something like that? Similar to the corridor study that was accomplished for south of the interchange there with Roxbury Road and the interstate?
You referring to the 106 arterial management plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. We could definitely ask her to look into that and get her opinion on that. She is the transportation expert for the county. Ultimately, that direction would come from the Board of Supervisors. But I think, you know, if we relay those feelings to the board, then it's something that the board could look into.
Good, so that relayed. Thank you very much, Mr. Aragi. Tonight, with your packet, you may have saw, saw a spreadsheet that was part of the package that were delivered to you or provided to you. This reinstates something that I think Mr. Moyer started a couple of years, and Mr. Davis and I asked both Mr. Aragi and Mr. Silva to kind of redo and look at, which is what applications have been made since our last meeting? Or just keep a flow chart of kind of like those applications that are ongoing with the planning staff of kind of what development work would, is occurring or we view of development or work that is occurring? So you may take a look at that. If you have any suggestions to add any column to it, please let them know. But I would like to make sure it can be accomplished on one sheet instead of a spreadsheet that is eight and a half by 14, okay? Just keep the folding down. But please, this will be presented with each packet that you receive. Next item that I have is about five weeks ago, I emailed individually those members of the commission that, from my information, their term was expiring this year, and suggested that, that they may want to seek conversation with their representative Board of Supervisors member to continue their position here on the commission. I hope that was accomplished. I know life changes things in your priorities if it has happened, that's so. If it has happened, that's, so be it. But I think we've got a pretty good group here, so I'd like to see it continue in the future. The final thing, oh, actually, two more items. Now is the time for your consideration of the positions of officers on this commission. We have chairman, vice chairman. We have chairman for the public hearing component of our, of our duties and vice chairman for the public hearing component of our duties. Those elections will occur on the first meeting of the next year. It could be January or February. I would presume it would be January. So, talk to your other fellow commissioners. See if they have a desire of maybe being one of those officers. Mr. Davis and I can, you know, inform them. Mr. Laura Schell can inform them what those duties really entail. And be able to pronounce a name next meet, first meeting in the next year. And then the final thing I was going to bring, and maybe Mr. Aragi or Mr. Silva is going, is if you are in desire, we would like to continue our pre-meeting, oh, not pre-meeting, but our pre-celebration for the holidays by meeting about an hour before our next meeting, which will be in, in December. And it is kind of, not really potluck, but bring something to share with the other commissioners and maybe the staff members. If anybody objects to that, let me know. Anybody wanting to object to that? All right. So, if that's okay, we'll do that. All right. Thank you very much. And that's all I have for right now. Staff reports. Anything, Mr. Aragi or Mr. Silva?
All right.
There we go.
Yeah, just one update. I would like to convey that within the planning division, we are now fully staffed. Aiden, who you, some of you all I've met tonight, has joined us about a month and a half ago. So, if you stop by the office, you'll see him up at the front desk about a month ago now. Maybe a little bit less, three weeks or so, we did hire a zoning administrator as well, Angela Leflet, who comes to us with a wealth of experience from the city of Hampton. So, she has joined the team. And we are all working on getting everyone up to speed with learning the code. And so, we are humming along nicely now. So, feel free to stop by and kind of meet us all face-to-face whenever you have some time or interest.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. One last thing, anything else that needs to be brought up by, by the commissioners? Our next meeting schedule is for December 4th, excuse me, December 16th, 6:30 this room. Again, we'll try to get together an hour forward, just bring a shareable item. I know what I'm going to bring, so. And if there is no other business to be conducted tonight, I appreciate everybody showed up. We had some good dialogue. I appreciate it. If, if no other items, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Accept it. The time is 7:18, sir. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.